Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us. My name is Megan Juflis. I'm Senior Planner with the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, and I'm the Project Manager for the Regional Housing Plan. And we are here today with our consultant team from SLR, Karen Martin and Liz Esposito, and also I see Robert Collins is joining us to talk to you about the creation of your 830J plan, which will be completed as part of this regional housing plan process. And so I think I would like to turn things over to Mary Dickerson, who will give you a little bit more background on.
Thank you, Megan. Last fall, we started kind of the pre-work on this plan. We did a survey, and those surveys were available online. And we also printed off and created survey booklets that were available at the public library and town hall and other public buildings. And then those surveys were collected and inputted. We only got 68 responses, I believe. We had hoped for a little bit more, but it was really to gauge how the residents of Portland viewed housing, housing opportunity, and housing affordability. So Karen and Liz have done a fabulous job with data collection, and they're going to present the results of the survey of people's opinions of living in Portland and what they think about our current housing opportunities and costs. And then they're going to show us the statistics behind that, the number of housing units we have, some income numbers, some population numbers. And then we're going to do some work together. So I think it will be fun, and it's an opportunity to learn about housing in Portland and how we can create more housing opportunities. So Karen, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, I'm going to share my screen so that everyone can see the presentation. I think I have to be given permission to share. There we go. Good. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Great. Okay. So, and I know we have a fairly small crowd here this evening. So like I said, we can maybe be a little more informal than we would otherwise. And when we get towards the end, we might be able to have more of a conversation even. So that will be great. So as we said, this presentation is going to be presenting the 8-30J Affordable Housing Plan Process for Portland as both Megan and Mary were introducing. We've been leading this with a project team that is being overseen by RiverCog. We've been working very closely with Mary from the town of Portland. And we have a consultant team that has consisted of SLR, Taki Planning and Policy Group, and also Goman in York have all been collaborating together to kind of get this multifaceted project and process off the ground. So the agenda for tonight, we have a few things that we want to cover. I will give an introduction that talks a lot about affordable housing, housing affordability, a lot of the concepts to help people become more familiar if there are aspects of housing affordability that they may not be familiar with. It can be a very nuanced kind of idea, and we will try to parse some of that out and see how it applies to Portland specifically. We do have the community survey results that Mary mentioned, and I will go into a little bit about how the respondents answered the survey and what that kind of tells us about how people think and feel about housing affordability in Portland. We have a set of existing conditions and some data and analysis to review that are related to housing in Portland. And this leads into a housing needs assessment, which shows where there are needs for housing affordability today in Portland. And then, as Mary said, the piece that kind of relates to actually kind of doing the work is what do we want the strategies in Portland's housing plan to actually be? What are the approaches and what are some of the objectives? And we're going to dive a little bit in to what some potential strategies for Portland are. And we may do the live polling exercise, or maybe when we get to that point, we'll actually find out that our small crowd can just kind of discuss it openly, and we will be free to answer any questions that come up at that. So for tonight, your primary role as a participant and listener tonight is to learn more about affordable housing in Portland and why it's important. Provide us with any input on the potential affordable housing strategies that we're going to discuss. And please feel free to ask any questions that you may have on anything that's covered. If you want to type anything into the Zoom chat box while the presentation's going on, we'll collect the questions and answer them at the end. And if we do do the live polling at the end, you'll just want to be either to open your phone, if you have a tablet maybe, or a second web browser on your computer. So we will get started. So first, we just want to tie this back to what's happening at the regional level. So as Megan said, RiverCog is kind of the overarching leader of this process. And this process is kind of happening in two kind of parallel and simultaneous pieces. One is that there is a regional level housing analysis being undertaken, which is focusing on region-wide trends and challenges when it comes to housing. And this document will be putting together recommendations that focus on how the region as a whole can assist the towns within the region in their housing coordination and creation. And then the second component of this overall process is the individual communities in RiverCog are working to create the state-required municipal annex plans. And we're calling them annexes because they're going to be attached to the overall larger regional housing plan document. And so there's 12 participating communities in RiverCog. They will have the individual plans. They'll kind of fall under the umbrella of the larger regional housing analysis. The municipal plans will focus on the town-specific affordable housing conditions and strategies, and it will be kind of this two-piece process where each piece informs the other piece and vice versa. So this leads us to the question of what is an affordable housing plan? So an affordable housing plan, in the context that we're referring to, is under Connecticut statute 8-30J, which was passed and adopted in 2017. All of the communities in Connecticut are required to create and adopt an affordable housing plan. The deadline is June of 2022, and then they will be expected to update this plan every five years moving forward. The idea of this plan is that it's a bottom-up approach where the community gets to put together the content of the plan and find the best approach for them to make some actionable progress towards meeting housing affordability goals. So the idea is that it's coming from the communities. They get to look at the needs and conditions in their community, and they get to identify what strategies make the most sense for them and how they're going to set some targets and some goals to increase the amount of housing affordability in their community. So this whole process is an opportunity to create a housing affordability plan that reflects Portland's specific values and priorities when it comes to its unique context. In terms of what this plan should actually contain and look like, the state has provided some guidance. They published it in a guidebook that came out in 2020, and they kind of offered some specific direction. They recommend that these 8-30J plans contain a community value statement that we conduct a housing needs assessment that will lay out what are the actual needs for housing in your specific community. They recommend that we evaluate local land use and zoning so that we can see if there are any barriers to affordable housing or just in general, housing development in the community. And then there should be a piece on developing goals, strategies, and actions for creating affordable housing and housing affordability, and how to apply some best practices to put these into place and implement them. So what actually qualifies as affordable housing? The term is used a lot, but when you actually look at it, what does it actually mean? So kind of, kind of at the highest level, affordable housing is typically defined as housing that costs no more than 30% of a household's income. Under the State of Connecticut's 8-30G statute, there's more specifics that come with this definition in which affordable housing is housing that, due to deed restrictions or subsidies, costs a low-income household no more than 30% of their income. Under the 8-30G statute, the state would like to see all communities in Connecticut reach 10% of their housing units to be affordable. And they define low-income households as those making less than 80% of the state or the area median income, whichever is less. This is a pretty common standard that's used by HUD, the state, kind of across the country as well. So if you zoom into Portland specifically and you're using this definition, what you end up seeing is that a family of four that makes under about $80,000 per year or an individual household that's making less than about $56,000 per year would qualify as low income. So then the next question is, so what does that mean in terms of what these kind of households can afford to spend on their housing? So when you break it down and you're looking at these households not spending more than 30% of their income on housing, you ultimately end up with a housing budget for these income groups that consists of something about $1,400 per month to spend on housing for an individual or about $2,000 to spend on housing per month for a family of four. Okay, so I will do a quick overview of the survey results from the survey that RiverCog had distributed in the fall. So it was available to all of the communities participating in this process in RiverCog. As Mary pointed out, there were about 68 responses from Portland residents. So this is a very small sample size. It comes out to about 0.7% of Portland's total population. But still, there are some interesting kind of results to look at to see how the respondents of the survey do pretty closely parallel the demographics of Portland residents as a whole. So about 54% of the respondents to this survey have lived in Portland a long time, long-time residents, more than 20 years. About a third of the respondents were seniors over the age of 65, with about 2/3 being employed full-time. 22% were retired. People who did work, who responded to the survey, largely work in either Portland or Middletown. There was a wide variety of household types responding to the survey, whether it be couples with children, couples without children, couples with adult children, and people who live alone. The respondents lived in households that ranged anywhere from one to five people. About 88% of the respondents live in a single-family home, which probably tells us a lot about the types of homes that are available and exist in Portland. About 88% of respondents own their home. And again, about half of the respondents were earners between $100,000 and $200,000. About a third earn between $50,000 and $100,000 a year. In terms of some of the questions that asked about how respondents feel and think about housing in Portland, about 56% of the respondents said that they see themselves living in the same-sized house in five years. 18% expect to live in a smaller household then, and 16% expect to live in a larger household. 65% of the respondents think they will live in the same house that they live in today in five years. 55% of the respondents said that they know someone who would move to or stay in Portland if it were more affordable. And about 45% of people said that they know either a family, friend, or neighbor who struggle with housing costs. But about a quarter of people said they do not know anyone who struggles with housing costs. 3/4 of the respondents said they themselves do not personally struggle with housing costs. But it's definitely important to keep in mind that this does not necessarily mean that there is no less or no need for affordable housing in Portland just because people don't necessarily know that the need is out there. A lot of the numbers that we're going to show in this presentation show that there definitely is ample need out there. About 2/3 of people who responded to the survey said they're aware that there is affordable housing that exists in Portland today. And about the same percentage felt that there is not enough adequate housing to meet Portland's residents' current housing needs. So this set of questions here asks people how they feel about the price of housing, the cost of housing in our area. So the most, highest percentage, 84%, feel that Connecticut as a whole is too expensive. 80% felt that housing in the region, so the lower Connecticut River Valley region, is too expensive, while a bit less, 67%, feel that housing in Portland specifically is too expensive. We asked people if they felt that affordable or attainable housing is an important component to Portland's longevity, and 77% of people feel that it is. This question asks specifically about housing choices for specific population groups. Is there enough or not enough of these types of housing units in Portland? So the largest percentage of people felt that there is definitely not enough housing in Portland for young adults. 78% of people felt that. 68% of people felt that people living alone do not have enough housing options, so housing options for singles and individuals. 64% of people felt that there were not enough housing units today for low-income households in Portland. And 63% felt that there were not enough rental options. But overall, there was a general agreement that there probably is about the right amount of housing for families with children and for homeowners. So in terms of, there was kind of an open-ended question that said, what do you think the potential benefits of housing diversity in Portland would be? So the first question was, do you think it would be a positive or a negative? 62% of people said that housing diversity would have a positive impact in Portland. 11% of the respondents said that they thought it would have a negative impact. And then when people were asked to just describe in their own words what they thought some of the top benefits of housing diversity are, some of the top responses were the idea of increased diversity of residents, whether it be socioeconomic, cultural, racial, age-wise, or other, enabling seniors to age in place, enabling young people who may have grown up here to remain living in town, enable people who work in Portland to live where they work. It would bring in more, more welcoming sense of community, and it might attract new businesses or restaurants to open in Portland. So that was just the review of the survey results. Now we're going to dig a bit into the data itself. And this is a review of both planning and zoning kind of conditions, existing conditions in Portland. So it's important to consider kind of zoning and kind of the lay of the land when you look at a community and you're looking to consider where or how can housing be built in the future. So if we start out, we take a look at the zoning, and we see what is allowed and where in terms of residential development in Portland. So this is a zoning map of Portland. There's four main residential zoning districts in Portland. Two-family dwellings are allowed in most of these zones through site plan approval process. Dwellings of four or more units are allowed by special permit in R10 zone, but prohibited in other zones. Attached ADUs are allowed by right, and detached ADUs are allowed by site plan approval. I'll go in and explain a bit more about accessory dwelling units and ADUs a little bit later. There is a new multiple-dwelling development zone as well, and there are some opportunities for mixed-use development. So obviously, this is a primarily lower-density, single-family-zoned community, but there are options for expanding some of the additional housing choices as well. It's also important to look at the existing infrastructure in a community because housing development depends quite largely on the availability of sewer and public water service. By looking at where these infrastructure systems exist in town, there is a connection and a correlation between where residential development can take place. So most of Portland relies on private septic systems. Sewer service exists only in the town center. The, there has been some discussion in the recent, the most recent POCD, that the extension of sewer service could benefit the overall economic development objectives of the community. So that could be something to consider in the future. Public water in Portland is supplied for 2,400 users. So that's kind of limited as well. So this has an impact on where future development can take place, considering what the limitations on residential development might be. Also important to take a look at the natural constraints, not just the built constraints. Not all of the land in any town, especially considering Portland as well can be used for development. There will be restrictions on development that include floodplains of the Connecticut River, for example, the aquifer protection areas, different sensitive environmental areas such as inland wetlands, natural diversity database areas, just steep slopes and other things that just make development not feasible. The eastern portion of the town is within the Mesomasic State Forest, and there is a forest overlay zone there. So there's limitations there as well. And about 1/3 of Portland is dedicated open space. So when you take all of those considerations, you'll see that the actual developable land for residential uses definitely decreases and is pretty limited to only certain areas. The Plan of Conservation and Development was adopted in 2016, the most recent version. And there was, of course, a section on housing within this 2016 POCD. So when we look back and see what some of the recent strategies for housing that were included at that time, some of them were to continue to encourage the use of conservation subdivisions to evaluate the impact of regulations regarding the conversion of larger homes in the town center to multifamily residences, continue to look into ways to incorporate denser housing development in the town center where water and sewer infrastructure exists, and consider housing options for low- and moderate-income households, first-time homebuyers, seniors, and young adults. So you can see a few connections there, especially when you look at the water and sewer strategy there that tie back to those slides that we were just looking at earlier. So now I'll just do a quick overview of some demographic trends that give us a sense of who lives in Portland today, who may be living in Portland in the future. So who needs housing and under what conditions? The population in Portland has ebbed and flowed over the years. This graph goes all the way back to 1960 and also has the projected future population from the Connecticut State Data Center going forward to 2040, where you can see that over the next 20 years, the population of Portland is projected to increase some, you know, somewhat, particularly compared to other communities in the region where the projected population is quite flat. There is a somewhat of a recovery from the kind of recent dip that you can see there between 2010 and 2020. These graphs have to do with the age distribution of residents in Portland. So you can see on the left that the graph is showing either the decrease or the increase of population by age group over the past 10 or so years. So a lot of the younger age groups, anywhere from children all the way up through people in their 40s, has been decreasing. Those are the bars in pink, whereas the ones on the right are the population groups that have been increasing. And those are largely, for the most part, any of those that are 55 and over. So definitely, the baby boomer cohort has been growing over time. The graph on the right just shows the percent of the population above age 65 and what percentage of the total population it represents. So it has been growing as well. When in 2000, only 14.5% of the population were seniors today. Over 19% of the population are seniors. This slide talks about household size. So how many people are in each household in Portland? And you can see that in 2019, 65% of all of the households in Portland are made up of only one or two people. This is a national trend, for sure. The size of households is decreasing. People are having fewer children. People are deciding not to have children. So when you put together the number of people that are either just one couple or one individual living alone, that's about 2/3 of all people in Portland. So when we just take some takeaways from that section there, the population has largely stabilized. The community is aging. There is growth in all of the age cohorts over age 50 and a drop in the number of children and people who are in the Gen X generation. And 2/3 of Portland households are very small, made up of either one or two people, which has implications if your existing housing options are not geared towards small households. This means that there may not be a matchup between the housing supply that you have and the household size demands that exist. Here, we're going to look a bit at the housing wage. This is a figure that takes into consideration what the housing wage that someone needs to earn in order to afford a two-bedroom rental home. These numbers come from a group called the National Low-Income Housing Coalition, and they look at how much does someone need to earn in order to not be cost-burdened by the rent to afford this kind of standard two-bedroom-sized rental home? So in Portland, that wage is $23.65 an hour. In order to kind of put this into perspective, because I think some people, it's difficult for them to know what is someone who typically earns that kind of job wage. We just looked at some estimated salaries for workers in Portland. We grabbed these from Indeed.com. But for example, an entry-level elementary school teacher earns about $21 an hour. A nurse would earn about $29 an hour. Someone who's a resale sales associate would earn about $16 an hour. So when you compare that to the wage to afford a two-bedroom rental, you can see that there are reasons why a lot of people would struggle with housing affordability. Okay, the next section is just, I'll do a quick overview of housing market trends in Portland to kind of see what kind of housing is out there and what does it look like. So in Portland, it is a largely detached, single-family community. 82% of the structures, the homes in Portland, are single-family detached. The remaining 18% is made up of a combination of different types of multifamily units, which obviously shows that there are limited options for multifamily with the predominance of single-family. This does have impacts on housing affordability as obviously the single-family detached dwellings are going to be larger and naturally more expensive. There will likely result in fewer rental options for multifamily units. This also ties back to just a couple of slides previously when we talked about household size. If the household sizes in Portland are largely one- and two-person households, then having this predominance of single-family detached dwellings that are going to be larger kind of leads to a type of mismatch there. In terms of the size of the units themselves, this bar graph here compares the size of housing units between Portland, the county, and the state. You can see that Portland has a much smaller number of studios and one-bedrooms than the county or the state. So it's only at 7% there. So again, that means that if there are these more small households, say only one single individual, they may struggle to find housing in Portland because most of the options are going to be too large for them. Otherwise, about 25% of the units in Portland are two-bedrooms, 48% are three-bedrooms, and 20% are four-bedrooms and larger, which obviously is indicative of the predominance of single-family homes. This is a chart showing home values in Portland. So you can see that about the largest bar there, about 45% of homes in Portland are valued at about the $200,000 to $300,000 range. And overall, 64% of homes are valued under $300,000. So this does mean that kind of naturally, the market provides some fair number of affordable housing options for homeownership in Portland. But important to keep in mind that just because when you look at this graph and you say, oh yeah, that looks like the houses are pretty affordable in Portland, it does not automatically mean that all of the needs for all of the residents are being met and that all of the income groups are able to afford to buy homes in Portland. Similarly, these graphs kind of all fall kind of under the same category, but the one on the top is the actual number of home sales in Portland over the last 20 years. So the rates of home sales were higher in the early 2000s. There was a pretty large dip there, kind of after the recession, kind of hitting an all-time low in 2011. It has been working its way back up, but has not quite recovered to those early 2000 numbers. The graph on the bottom is the home sale prices over the past 20 years in Portland. And you can see that the blue line is single families and the green line is condos. So single families have been trending slightly, but not hugely higher than condos, and that the single-family home prices have hit an all-time high by 2021. The condos are lagging a bit behind and actually have not recovered to the sale points that they had been in the early 2000s. But they're definitely increasing. There could be some implications of COVID. There was a COVID kind of bump in the market, but that's probably expected to be temporary. The increasing sale prices may encourage more current owners to sell, which means that there could be the opportunity for new people to come into Portland if they can find housing that meets their needs. This is a graph of the number of housing permits that have been issued over time the past 20 years in Portland. And you can see a pretty drastic decline and kind of just drop-off in the number of housing permits that have been issued. So after some kind of relatively large activity in the early 2000s, it definitely has dropped, and there really have not been any years where there have been even more than 13 or so housing permits issued in the past 15 years. The five-year average recently is 6.6 permits per year. We do know that 99 units in Brainerd Place will be permitted in 2022. So there may be a bump that we see most. So there may be a bump that we see most recently, but otherwise, this is indicating that there just is not a lot of building activity for residential happening. And then we just shift over a little bit towards rents, because that's also very important to talk about, not just sales and homeowner opportunities, but in terms of rents. Overall, there's a fairly limited number of rentals just in total in Portland, about six hundred and fifty five units total. But all of the rental units in Portland cost less than two thousand dollars per month, with about a third of them under a thousand dollars. So again, this is showing that there are naturally affordable rental options. But it's not just an automatic guarantee that that means everyone can find a rental in their price range. So just again, the takeaways from that section are homogenous housing stock, primarily single family. Few small unit options with only seven percent being one bedrooms, not a lot of new housing permit activity happening. Both home prices and rent prices have a naturally affordable component, but this doesn't tell the entire picture. The strengthening single family and condo sales market since twenty nineteen can be tied to the pandemic. But doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to stay that way. So now we'll just move into the housing needs assessment, which just takes a lot of the information that we just presented. And talks about what some of the unmet need for housing in Portland is. So first, we're going to talk a little bit just quickly about protected affordable housing. So at the beginning of the presentation, we were talking a bit about Connecticut statutes definitions for affordable housing. So, and just now I was talking a bit about the concept of naturally occurring and naturally affordable housing. Kind of on the flip side of that is the other side of the equation, which is protected affordable housing. So these are housing units that meet the state's statutory definition of affordable housing. Meaning they're restricted to households that make less than eighty percent of the area median income. So that those households are not spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And if these types of units are protected through either a subsidy or a deed restriction. And they qualify, the state will be keeping track of these units to see how many each community in the state has. So currently, Portland has three hundred and forty nine housing units that qualify as affordable. A lot of people are kind of always interested in looking at this number, because they're aware that the state does have a goal for all towns to reach ten percent. And until a town does reach the ten percent, they are open to housing developments under the eight dash thirty G statute. We're not really focusing too specifically on those numbers for this plan. We're kind of looking more at just the concepts of increasing housing affordability, making new opportunities. And not just necessarily hitting one number goal or one target. But it is just kind of just important and good information to have and know. That Portland is at around eight and a half percent affordable housing units of its total stock. Which is a really great number and a really, really strong showing and availability of affordable housing units. Meaning that you are getting close to the ten percent and there are a lot of protected opportunities in Portland. So that is great and it kind of helps us inform some of the, some of the strategy that this affordable housing plan will take on. Knowing that you have a lot of affordable housing to begin with and are kind of on the right track. So just kind of the next approach is kind of where do we go from here? But you can see that this is also broken down by the types of protected affordable units with about fifty three percent of them being government assisted units. Twenty seven percent being tenant rental assistance, which would be something like section eight vouchers. And the other twenty or so percent being single family, first time home buyer mortgages. Or other opportunities for home buyers for homeownership assistance. So the next set of slides shows the current existing conditions of how many households in Portland do fall under these categories of low income. And these categories actually break down low income even further from low income. You can also look at then very low income and then extremely low income. So if low income is households that earn between fifty one and eighty percent of the area median income. Very low is even below that thirty one to fifty percent. And then extremely low would be households earning less than thirty percent. So if we actually look at the numbers, there's about four hundred and five low income households in Portland. Three hundred and sixty five very low income households and three hundred and sixty extremely low income households. And then we've just broken down each of those numbers by the number of homeowners and renters. So these two numbers here, homeowners and renters, when you add them together, you get this number on the top. So when we add these three numbers across the top together, we get that there are one thousand one hundred and thirty households in Portland. Who meet the definition of low income and that would be twenty nine percent of the total population. And you can see that it is a mix of homeowners and renters. So both homeowners and renters are, you know, both can fall under these categories of low income. Then we take that same information and we just translate it into for homeowners. What does that mean that people in these income categories could afford if they were looking to purchase a home? And the two categories that are looked at are individual households and families of four. So these are kind of just two standard household sizes to just consider for kind of variation. So we can see these numbers here ranging anywhere from a low of seventy two thousand dollars would be what an individual who is an extremely low income household. Could afford to buy for a home ranging to the highest would be two hundred and sixty three thousand for a family of four who falls under the low income category. And when we look at these housing costs, it does consider a twenty percent down payment. Considers mortgage, a thirty year mortgage at five percent interest and is also including things like taxes and carrying costs. So those all go into those kind of maximum homeownership levels. This is the same graph, but we're looking at rents now. So if these households were looking to rent, these would be the maximum monthly rent payments that they would be able to afford. So again, ranging from the lowest of an extremely low income individual could pay four hundred and eighty two dollars in rent. And a low income family of four could afford seventeen hundred and fifty four dollars a month in rent. So just when you're looking at these numbers, you can kind of compare them back to when we are showing the graphs of what the rents and the home prices in Portland actually are. And you'll probably see that there are still areas in which people in some of these categories would struggle to find housing that meets their needs in Portland. This slide talks about cost burden. So again, I think we touched upon already that cost burden is this concept of not spending more than thirty percent of your income on housing. If you do spend more than thirty percent of your income on housing. Household may have difficulty affording necessities, they won't have enough disposable income left over for things like food, clothing, transportation and medical costs. So this is kind of a standardized number that is considered trying to keep housing costs, especially for low income households below thirty percent. So about seventy three percent of the low income households in Portland are considered to be cost burdened. This compares to four percent of households who are not considered low income. So you could be not low income and still cost burdened, but it's likely not as much of a concern for you as if you are low, low income. So it's an important thing to take a look at. When we look at some specific populations here, the top table is showing cost burden by age group. So you can see that thirty percent of seniors over the age of sixty five are cost burdened. And then it's less for younger population groups. On the bottom is the number of cost burden renters versus the number of cost burdened owners. And you can see that substantially more renters in Portland are cost burdened than owners. I also just wanted to quickly touch on, we wanted to discuss the Portland Housing Authority. So the Portland Housing Authority does have a number of publicly assisted affordable units in Portland. There are a hundred and eighteen subsidized units in the two housing authority developments communities in Portland. At Chatham Court and at Quarry Heights, one of them provides forty eight subsidized units targeted for families. And one has seventy units and those are targeted at the elderly and disabled. So these units would be in, have been included in that table of protected affordable units. And they provide a good asset and meet needs for these groups in Portland, which is very important. And the last piece of this analysis and data section is what we call the housing gap analysis. So this was a section of the plan also recommended by the state. And they have asked that everyone kind of perform this housing gap analysis in each community to really get a good sense of where some of the. So the so called gap in housing is. So basically, this is a calculation that is looking at the number of, these are the numbers that we showed earlier. But when you take the number of. The number of households in Portland that have housing needs. And you take the number of housing units that would be affordable to those people and you subtract them, you get this number which would be called the housing gap. The housing gap number will either be negative if there is not enough housing or it would be positive if you do have more than enough housing for these groups. So when we look at the housing gap analysis for Portland, as I said, you take the housing supply, you subtract the housing demand and you get this housing gap. So when we ran that analysis for Portland, there it produces a huge table with a huge number of, of large and complicated numbers on it. So rather than presenting the whole analysis, kind of just the summary, which is interesting to just consider. Is that for families of four, there's only a very small housing gap that exists in Portland for extremely low and very low incomes. And there actually is an adequate number of units for low income families. So Portland is actually doing pretty well in providing affordable units for families of four. For a single person households, there's a small gap that exists across the board, whether it's for income, low income, extremely low income. Or very low income for owners and renters. So compared to the other communities in the region, and we've performed the same analysis for all of the communities in River Cog. Portland actually had some of the smallest housing gaps, which means that although there is some need, there's also a lot of the need that's being pretty adequately met. So that's definitely something that's good to keep in mind. And like I said, kind of all the numbers for anyone who's interested in kind of seeing the full extent of that analysis. That will be available in kind of the background data information in the affordable housing plan. So it's always very interesting to review and to keep in mind. So just the takeaways from this section are that there are fairly significant affordable housing needs within Portland. With about a third of all the households classifying as low income. With seventy three percent of the low income households being cost burdened currently by their housing costs. But Portland has made significant progress towards the state's ten percent goal with currently having this eight and a half percent of protected affordable housing units today. The housing gap exists across most of the segments. The largest gap is for these individual households. And that makes a lot of sense when you consider all of the data that was presented, especially when we looked at and talked about how there are not a lot of small units in Portland. So if there's not a lot of small units, but you are an individual who lives alone in a single person household. You're going to struggle the most to find housing in Portland, because most of the units are going to be not the right size for you. So therefore, the gap is the largest for smaller households and less for families. So overall, the populations in Portland with the most disproportionate cost burdens and likely the highest housing needs are going to be these low income. Household groups making less than eighty percent of area median income, senior households, renters specifically as compared to homeowners. And single person or single income households as compared to families or larger households. So that concludes all of the data and kind of background information that we're going to present to you. And the next section of the workshop tonight is presenting the strategies and the live polling. Do we want to try the live polling? How do people feel right now? Because we have such a small group, or we could kind of get to the end of each of the strategies and just hear what people think.
Yeah, I think we can, we can have the polling up and if people want to do it that way.
They just wanted to do it. Okay. But if you want us, if you want to speak out, because it's a small group, I think that will be fine too. But we can all kind of play along and, and see how it goes. So, okay, so to get started, for those who want to participate. We are going to ask everyone if they can on their phone or on their second open browser window. If you're on your laptop, any other device that you have, you can go to poll eve dot com slash S L R twenty twenty one. And you should see a screen that says S L R pop up. And. Why don't we flip to the test question? So everyone should be able to see that this is going to pop up. They can participate and we can see how it seems to be working.
I believe we have five people.
Five people, that's, that's probably everyone represented, so that's probably good. It's probably close to full participation. Hi, chocolate and mint chocolate chip, we've got. Okay, so I think, I think we probably got everyone on board, so we'll, we'll keep going. Okay, so first, these are just a set of questions that River Cog has, is interested in just knowing a bit about who's listening tonight. Compared to some of the previous community engagement efforts that were being done at the regional level. So there were two workshops that River Cog held in, one was in October and one was in January. They were both virtual, so did anyone attend either of those workshops? Yes, no? Okay. Excellent, okay, so a little bit of both. And then obviously, at the beginning, we were talking about the, the survey that took place in the fall. And that was at the regional level and those were the responses that we shared from Portland. So did anyone who's here tonight complete that regional housing survey? Yes, okay. Good, glad everyone was able to, to take the survey earlier this, earlier this year. Okay, so now we will go into the section covering the potential strategies. These are the strategies that Portland is potentially looking to consider incorporating into its eight dash thirty J affordable housing plan. So there are many strategies out there, ways to pursue affordable housing, ways to increase opportunities for housing affordability in communities. In, in terms of the eight dash thirty J plans, every community is looking at strategies that make the most sense for their community in terms of the existing conditions. The context, the needs. And the input of stakeholders and the public. So we've worked a bit with Mary to discuss kind of, kind of what are some current opportunities in Portland? To move forward with a few different housing strategies. And we have selected four that we're going to explore and discuss this evening. These are not necessarily the only strategies that will go into the plan, but they are four that seem appropriate. And have potential for Portland. And the reason that we're here tonight is so that we can show them to the public and get some feedback on if people feel that these are heading in the right direction. And if they seem to make sense for Portland. So the four that we're going to explore this evening are, one is to expand the knowledge of Portland's existing accessory dwelling unit regulations. And the opportunities to implement them. The second will be exploring the concept of adaptive reuse, which is the opportunity to repurpose existing vacant buildings into affordable housing. The third one will look at our potential incentives for deed restricted affordable units to be included in new development. And the fourth one will be the idea of promoting home buyer education regarding mortgages and financing for lower income households. To increase opportunities for homeownership for these income groups. Okay, so for each strategy, we're going to present a little bit about what it is. We may have a case study or an example, and then we'll talk a little bit about how this could actually be put into action in Portland. So for strategy number one, this is the idea of accessory dwelling units. So accessory dwelling units or they're usually referred to as ADUs are small dwellings on the same property as a single family home. Accessory dwelling units can provide naturally affordable housing options, because they are usually smaller. They're subordinate to the primary single family home on the residence. As you can see in this graphic, they can take on a number of forms, whether they are detached from the main structure, attached, they could be in the basement. They could be above a garage, it can be in an accessory cottage, barn. On the property, so they can take on numerous styles and forms. And they can be, because they're usually smaller, they may either cost lower rent. Or the primary homeowner can be renting out and taking that rental income, which could actually then reduce their own housing costs. Which can then actually increase the affordability potentially for both. Which can then actually increase the affordability potentially for both residents in both units on the property. They wouldn't count as protected affordable units unless there was a deed restriction attached to them. That met the state definition of affordable, but that is technically also an option as well. There was also a lot of talk about accessory dwelling units in twenty twenty one. And they came, became a large part of recent state legislature, Public Act twenty one dash twenty nine that was passed last year. Which tried to loosen or require communities across Connecticut to loosen their accessory dwelling unit. Requirements to make them less restrictive, to try to incentivize and promote them across the state. So there's been a lot of just talk and popularity amongst the concept of accessory dwelling units. In in Portland today, Portland actually has pretty permissive accessory dwelling unit regulations. There's been updates made to your regulations to try to loosen and relax some of the regulations. So that they are more permissive and more people could potentially take advantage of them. So the strategy here is not so much to make changes to your existing regulations. But to utilize the permissive regulations that are currently in place and try to get more people to be able to take advantage of them. So ADUs in Portland and in many communities are still minimally utilized. A lot of people don't necessarily take advantage of them, maybe they don't even know that they're an option for their property or for their housing situation. So what a potential strategy here is, is that Portland could explore options to spread knowledge and education about ADUs. To property owners. And there's definitely a few different ways that this could be undertaken, but it could look like something like creating handouts. That sit in the land use department on the counter, create brochures. Add a new special webpage on the planning department website that just features ADUs and what they are. And how they can be implemented, it could be an F A Q page or handout. That helps people kind of identify what are these and why might I be interested in one? And then if I am interested in one, how can I go about getting one on my property? Helping people understand the zoning process to construct one and what their options might be. So by taking advantage of the existing regulations, but just making sure that more people are aware. And if more people are aware, you might actually be able to increase the number of ADUs in Portland. Which would create some new naturally occurring affordable housing. So this polling question is asking, what is your level of familiarity with ADUs? So do you have an ADU on your property? Do you know someone who does? Maybe you've at least heard of the concept. What is your level of familiarity with accessory dwelling units? Okay, so it seems like everyone has heard of the concept of accessory dwelling units, but they don't know anyone who has one. So, you know, that makes a lot of sense, like I said, they're getting kind of a lot of talk these days. But the kind of next step is actually getting to implement them in our communities. So would you potentially, could you support raising awareness about ADUs as a housing option in Portland? So, okay, says everyone is comfortable with this idea, so that's definitely good to know. Okay, so the second strategy that we're going to promote or potentially Consider here is the concept of adaptive reuse. So adaptive reuse is reusing existing buildings for new purposes. That are not necessarily their original intended purpose. And one of these new purposes could be housing. So the concept of adaptive reuse promotes the idea of infill development. Which means that you're taking properties or buildings that have already been developed. They're going to have most likely existing services and infrastructure. Because they did previously exist and they did previously have another use in their previous life. The types of buildings that can be considered for adaptive reuse can be a broad range. Could range anywhere from residential to non-residential structures. There's a very important historic preservation aspect to adaptive reuse. Where instead of buildings being torn down, they get to be given a new life. So if you have buildings that have a lot of historic or architectural significant and integrity. They can be repurposed and that has, especially in places like Connecticut. Where historic resources are so crucial and critical to identity. There's those benefits, there's also environmental and cost benefits. From not tearing down an entire building and rebuilding a new one, but instead reusing it. And there are, you know, for a variety of reasons, different buildings that become vacant and are no longer being served by their original use. That do have the potential to be re-repurposed into housing. There is, for example, a case in a small town outside of Boston in Swamp Scott, Massachusetts. On the left was a church that had become vacant. It was originally from the late eighteen hundreds and it was sold, restored and converted into two residential condo units in two thousand eight. So the new reconverted condos are shown on the right. The historical and architectural integrity of the property was largely preserved on the outside as well as the inside. And incorporated into the new units in a really appealing residential neighborhood that was located near amenities. So how would you go about pursuing adaptive reuse? So Mary had actually informed me that Portland is actually something that Portland has been considering and looking into. Expanding adaptive reuse incentives into additional zones throughout Portland. Not necessarily existing residential zones, targeting large non-conforming structures. That currently exist in some of your residential zones and adapting those unused structures to residential uses. Potentially, there could be bonuses if the units were deed restricted at affordable levels. Again, this would encourage historic preservation. And the types of buildings that this could be aimed at could be churches, former schools, buildings that had belonged to fraternal organizations. And other buildings throughout Portland that are currently vacant or not being utilized. Another strategy that is popular is collaborating with some local Connecticut housing nonprofits. Who specialize in converting buildings into affordable housing. So these are a few ways that the adaptive reuse concept could ultimately end up being Put into action in Portland. So do you feel that you could support repurposing vacant structures in Portland into housing units? Okay, so it looks like one hundred percent of people have said yes.
And that for the folks, the folks on the call, if you feel comfortable, are there certain locations that spring to mind? That would be a good candidate for adaptive reuse? Or do you just support it generally? Feel free to unmute, I think we've got a small enough group that you don't need to raise your hand. Well, if you think of anything, feel free to drop it in the chat.
Yeah, I would definitely be.
I think, well, I'd like to just say that the schools are being studied, the facility study committee is looking at five schools. We haven't come up with a plan yet, but there may in fact be a school that would be recommissioned as apartments or offices or whatever. So to be continued, but that would be one, certainly one area that would provide some affordable housing.
Yeah, you can definitely see that area, in fact, that probably leads us into the next question. Which just is specifically asking if there are any types of structures that you think you Would be interested in seeing adapted to multifamily units. So again, these are just a couple of the just umbrella categories of buildings that could potentially lend themselves. And you can choose more than one, as many as you would be interested in seeing, so. Yeah, so it looks like there's some interest kind of across the board. Some different options are churches, institutional buildings, former schools, and even large single family homes. So it doesn't have to always be a non-residential use. It could be a residential use if there's any like historic, like very large kind of mansions or anything. That in today's day and age are for the most part oversized and too large. Can be converted and adapted into smaller multiple units. So, okay, excellent.
Oh, sorry, I'm just going to jump in one more time. So for the folks who didn't pick Commercial spaces, do you want to tell us why? And if there's Something about them that you want to preserve as a non-residential use.
So I will, I will jump in here. I think Portland has a lot of properties owned residential. And we have a very small por- percentage of our properties owned either commercial or industrial. So taking away those commercial and industrial spaces, it would be very hard to bring them back. And I think they're kind of our revenue generating sector, so to take a revenue generating sector and convert it, convert it to residential. May end up costing the town in the long run.
Right, okay, so not wanting to lose those types of properties.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, cool, okay, those are very interesting responses. Okay, the next strategy that we wanted to explore is a little bit more shifting. This shifts over to the policy side, so whereas kind of the first two concepts were more like a physical tangible change. That could be undertaken, this one is more looking from a policy or programmatic point of view. So this one has to do with CHAFA mortgages. CHAFA is the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, which is a state Organization that provides first time homebuyer loans. For homebuyers that are looking for houses that are within certain income limits. And earn, those who are earning a gross income that is within a set of particular income limits. And they offer mortgages and loans that are typically at lower market interest rates. And they're targeted at these first time homebuyers. They exist all over the state and these types of loans have been awarded in many communities across Connecticut. Some of the data here on this slide is data that's publicly available from CHAFA. On the types of loans that actually have been issued and approved in Portland over the last five years. So there have been twenty-one CHAFA loans for single family homes over the past five years. For people who have had a median household income of about seventy thousand dollars. The median amount of one of these first time homebuyer loans has been for about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The average age of a loan recipient has been thirty-three and the average household size is two. So you can see that these are largely targeted at relatively young people with relatively small household sizes. In fact, sixty-six percent of the loans have actually gone to people in single person households. And the homes that have been purchased have ranged anywhere in price from a hundred and fifty-four thousand to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. You can see that they're definitely targeted to homes that are within these affordable price ranges. So the strategy here is promoting the availability, the familiarity and the knowledge. That these first time homebuyer mortgages and loans exist as a way to attract more first time homebuyers. To Portland if they are aware that they can take advantage and potentially qualify for some of these mortgages. Homes that are financed through the CHAFA mortgages count as protected affordable housing units with the state. So the more types of these mortgages and loans that can be issued in Portland. Actually has a direct correlation and benefit to the number of affordable housing units. And obviously, it creates a new Option for affordability and homeowner attainment for people that definitely have a clear need. So the strategy here, like I said, is more conceptual, but we're looking at the idea of developing strategies. So that people are more familiar that this is an option and an opportunity for them. The fact that these mortgages exist is really awesome, but if they're not being connected or marketed or targeted. Towards the people who are going to qualify and take advantage, they won't, you know, have as much widespread application. So the idea here is that Portland can work on some different strategies to try to share this information. There's kind of a wide variety of forms that this could take. But it could consist of things like Portland hosting or advertising homebuyer education classes. You can see from this screenshot here that CHAFA offers a lot of webinars or events to try to promote. And have more widespread knowledge of what they do offer. So they're offering all kinds of, you know, homebuyer and realtor related Seminars and webinars, but people don't necessarily know that this is an option unless they've been kind of be connected with the events or the opportunities. So other options include partnering with nonprofits or partnering with some of your surrounding towns. Maybe to provide a CHAFA housing counselor, maybe somebody like a liaison or a point person in Portland. That could connect people with the resources that they need and that they're looking for. So those are just a few different ideas, and like I said, this is kind of like an education based strategy. Trying to let people know what opportunities are out there so that they can pursue them. So do you believe that Portland could work to promote these types of opportunities for first time homebuyers? Do you feel that this would be something that would be beneficial to Portland? Okay, so we have a hundred percent of people are saying yes. And then just to get a little bit more specific. The next question is asking what types of opportunities would you, could you potentially support? For Portland to promote these programs? So again, some of the options could be things like identifying a housing liaison point person. Portland could promote external CHAFA workshops being maybe held by CHAFA themselves. Portland could hold its own workshops. Portland could do things like provide education to local realtors. If local realtors are more familiar and knowledgeable with these programs. They can then speak to potential homebuyers who visit and speak to them to let them know they might qualify. And then Portland could also do something like distribute educational handouts, flyers and materials. Maybe in places like Town Hall or the library, so people who might potentially take advantage can kind of see some of those materials. So what ideas kind of sound good to people? So it looks like some people are potentially interested in the idea of a housing liaison point person. Some people might be interested in providing this type of education to local realtors. Holding some workshops, so that would be good. Does anyone want to share anything about some of their ideas or their response specifically? No? So I mean, like I said, I think these are, this is a broad range of strategies. And again, I think pursuing a few of them would definitely be beneficial. And I think because these are kind of at a policy and an education level, I think they're, you know, some of these are relatively low hanging fruit. But actually something that would have a big impact if more people can be connected with qualifying mortgages and loans, so excellent. Okay, so the last final strategy here is going to be potential for adaptive zoning. So this strategy is a policy that would encourage a percentage of affordable units. In new market rate developments. So this could be implemented in a number of ways. This could be a program that is either a requirement or a voluntary Kind of offering an agreement with a developer. So if a developer came into Portland and wanted to develop Some market rate units, this would be an opportunity for them to include a portion or percentage of them as affordable. So again, it could be set up as something where it either has to be a certain number of units are affordable. Or something where an agreement on a voluntary basis through conversation and discussion with the developer. Something is is mutually agreed upon. This can apply to a development of multiple single family units or a building or a development of multifamily units. In order to set up some type of policy or regulation or even just a set of guidelines. If it was not to be mandatory or required, the town would want to consider determining the percentage of the total units. That would be affordable, typically it's something ranging anywhere between ten percent and twenty percent of the total number of units. Would be designated as affordable. And then the town can also have some input on the level of the affordability. So the units could be geared towards those ranging anywhere between sixty percent To eighty percent of area median income households. So by considering kind of a number of parameters. This could be a way to bring in more deed restricted affordable units. Through market rate developments that may be proposed in Portland. um through um market rate developments that may be proposed in Portland. Um, an example, there's numerous examples of this type of policy or regulation across the state. Um, an example that seems um kind of appropriate and reasonable um is one that exists in Darien. It was adopted in two thousand eight. It applies to multifamily units as well as single-family subdivisions. They are requiring that a minimum of fourteen percent of the units be um restricted as affordable for residents who are earning eighty percent or less of the state median income. Those units are deed-restricted for at least forty years or the life of the unit, whichever is longer. Um, there can be other components here such as if the developer would uh rather not meet the requirement, um they could instead pay a fee in lieu cash contribution to the town for um future um kind of rehab. It usually goes into a temp- type of fund. Um, and then also under their regulations in Darien, um the developer is eligible for an increase in permitted density up to fifty percent if they include at least twenty-five um percent of the units um designated below market rate. So they've kind of included some type of bonus um incentive. Um, so again, this would be an example of um a mandatory program. Um, but there's definitely considerations and options for either a mandatory or a voluntary program. Um, and if Portland were to consider this as an option, um they could consider a zoning amendment to create such an adaptive regulation based on Portland's particular desired components. Alternatively, it could be a set of uh guidelines for voluntary participation where um if someone is, a developer comes in and they're interested, um a conversation could take place and Portland could present a set of um kind of guidelines that say if you would like to um pursue this path, this is kind of the guidance that we're going to offer you. So discussions could be had about identifying a target percentage, a target affordability rate, a possible payment in lieu option. Um, and by considering these different elements, um a type of regulation or policy could be created um that could be put into place in Portland. So do you think you could be in favor of encouraging new developments in Portland to include a portion of the units as affordable? Okay, looks like everyone is potentially in support of this type of strategy.
So what would this kind of regulation look like to you? Um, what would be something, would you like to see it as voluntary or as mandatory? Would there be a certain percentage that you'd be interested in seeing? That'd be affordable?
Yeah, does anyone have any sense? Um, you know, I know it, it can be, it can be hard to kind of know exactly kind of what, what the best case scenario is, but um, you know, the idea is that there is flexibility there um and kind of the, the regulation we set up in a way that um, you know, kind of makes the most sense for Portland and its goals. I think I may actually have a question that might get a little bit more at some of that. Let's see what the next question is. The next question is, would you be interested? I read Liz's mind. Um, would you be interested in seeing this as a mandi- mandatory requirement or a voluntary option for developers? Okay, not sure. Potentially voluntary. Okay. That's definitely helpful. Um, yeah, I mean, and it is hard to know. And sometimes the conversation really has to get started um and more information, um kind of data um and other examples, um if they can be presented. Um, looking at case studies from other communities across Connecticut can be really helpful um to kind of know where other towns are falling on this kind of policy. Um, and kind of once that kind of discussion starts, um some of the more specific points um can be worked out. So I think the next question is, what percentage of the units would you potentially be interested in seeing being encouraged to be affordable? So um kind of typical um set aside percentages tend to be either ten, fifteen, or twenty percent. Do you have a sense of what you might be interested in? Okay, some for ten percent, some for fifteen percent. So. Great, okay. That is definitely good information to have. Okay, so those were the four strategies. Um, so this is just the final wrap-up question. Now that you've seen these four potential strategies presented, um how do you think you would rank them um personally in order from most desirable to least desirable for Portland to explore? Um, so this is set up as a ranking question.
Yeah, so you're gonna wanna put the strategy you like the best at the top and the one you like the least at the bottom. If you're on a phone, you have to click and hold, and some arrows will appear next to that option. And you can, and you can move it up and down. This one takes a little bit longer.
Put your choices in order. We'll see what pops up. There we go. See. Okay, so this looks like some people have put ADUs and the kind of first-time homebuyer uh education um as their first choice. Um, adaptive reuse and the adaptive zoning concepts um as the third choices. Um, okay, so that kind of gives a sense of the top two are a little more preferable than the bottom two, um but potentially interest all around. So um, so that's very helpful. Um, and we will take these responses and save the results and hold on to them so um that they can continue to be part of the ongoing conversation as we continue to move forward in um drafting the eight dash thirty J plan and continuing um to solicit public feedback. So. Do, do. Um, so this is just um, just a wrap-up of the next steps in this process. So obviously, this public workshop was a key component um in the process um of uh working towards um getting um the eight dash thirty J plan completed. Uh, we will be continuing to work with um Mary River Cog um and the Portland community, the public um to uh work on these strategies. Um, your feedback was extremely helpful and will contribute um towards um the next step as we continue to look at the strategies, um how um they can be placed into um goals and objectives and actions that will go into the draft um plan itself. Um, then the next step will be include um all of this information into the actual draft of the report annex. Um, once we have the first written draft, um the draft will be available for a public review probably sometime in the mid-spring. Um, and after um we're able to um, you know, show the, the draft itself um and kind of what um the strategies, how they've been fleshed out and incorporated in the plan. And uh any, elicit any additional feedback. Um, that will be with the goal of moving then towards the adoption process of the eight dash thirty J plan. Um, that deadline, as we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, is June um for, I should say first of twenty-two. Um, and so that is the target to actually have a final draft ready um to submit to the state. Um, but between now and then, um we envision um some, you know, more ongoing conversation. Um, this is a public engagement process. Um, so uh at the end here, we will obviously wrap up and um we can continue the conversation. Um, and this is definitely not the, not the last uh opportunity for people to um weigh in. Um, but this gives us some really good um direction um as to how we want to move forward. So um, I know that there may be some questions that have popped up in the chat, so I know that we will want to address those. Um, but also just if there's any other thoughts that anyone has after having heard the presentation on any of these types of questions, these are just a few um kind of questions to toss out there. Um, if anyone wants to just consider any of these. Um, is there anything that we did not cover this evening um in terms of strategies that you would like to see Portland pursue? Um, did you hear anything this evening that changed any of your opinions about housing affordability or any of the concepts that we discussed? Um, was there anything that we presented that you feel that you would like to get more information or um have covered in more detail um to learn a little bit more? Um, and any thoughts and did this change anything about how you feel about the current state of housing in Portland? So um, these are just um some kind of just brainstorm questions. If you do wanna kick any of these around, otherwise we'll check out um if there was any conversation in the chat and we can definitely open it up now. So thank you so much for listening and participating. I will stop sharing my screen so everyone can see each other. Awesome, okay, there we are.
So I, I.
You're on mute, Meg.
Touchpad here, can you hear me now? So, so th- th- these are the questions that I have. Um, tax impact like on, with ADUs, you know, somebody's gonna put a little shed or put a little house or whatever in the back uh of their property. Um, what's the tax impact and, and um is that gonna be addressed or is that a future conversation? Um, also, just um, do the plans, will the plans include um grants, um federal or state funding for housing development, um incentives, um small city grants, any of that? Um, or is that to be developed after we adopt the plan and we look at all the components of uh creating affordable housing in Portland?
So for the first part, for the first part of your question about ADUs, um the ADU would be considered an asset uh for that person? So their taxes would be reevaluated based on the new assessment um with that addition? Uh, but that specifically will be? It remains to be seen. There, there may be some data floating out there with the current ADUs that exist in Portland about how that has impacted things, um but we aren't privy to that at this time. As far as funding sources, that is something that we can include is lists of where Portland may look for different grant funding to help um move the ball forward on this, on these kinds of things. Yeah, we just figured it was, it was kind of generic for tonight. Um, cuz we really wanna get your feedback on things that Portland can do. So yeah, I hope that answers everything adequately. Great.
Excellent. Anyone else? Any?
I do not have anything in the chat.
In the chat, right, okay. I think we covered that.
Uh, if I could say something real quick, um, well, uh, at first I will disclose that I am at River Cog, but I'm also a Portland resident, so I'm here in both capacities.
Awesome.
Um, I'm pleased to see that Portland is fairly on track. Of course, there's always room for improvement. Uh, but I was, I was very surprised to see that we're, we're kind of ahead of a, ahead of the curve, which is, which is a typical Portland thing to do. I'm just curious in, in the overall analysis specifically for new homebuyers or for younger homebuyers, if the issues surrounding student debt and other, other burdens that are on younger people uh that, that has been factored into this affordability component.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Good question.
Yeah, so for cost burden, uh, we didn't specifically look at existing debt. But if you, if you are spending more than thirty percent of your income on housing, that is likely eating into the payments you can make every month and your ability to keep up with your debt and that interest. And if you're prioritizing paying off your debt, then you're not spending more of your income on housing and you're excluded from this market. So in some ways, we're not seeing the folks who aren't in Portland. And that, that is a gap in the data, but unfortunately, it's, it's very difficult to get around um and see who potentially would be in the community.
Yeah, but there's definitely, you know, I mean, I know there's definitely information out there about trends, about how many fewer young people are buying homes um because they are too debt-ridden. Um, you know, I know homeownership rates are going down and those are having implications on communities because the potential market of homebuyers is not what it was. And when people are, when older, um people are downsizing and selling their homes, there may not be as many available uh, a pool of potential buyers. Um, and a lot of people are relying on rentals. Um, and as we saw, there are many fewer rentals out there than um homes for sale in places like Portland and the region. Um, so I think as Liz said, there's just a lot of ties and connections that can be made between what happens when people have to spend too much of their income on, you know, student loan payments, for example, and there's not enough left over for down payments or things like that. And so there, there are a series of implications there uh for sure.
And I think in one of our earlier presentations, Don Poland did an analysis, and he spoke to the fact that um young adults are getting into the housing market later. And part of this sort of housing crunch now is kind of the first wave of the post-payoff young adults being able to get out there and afford at the same time that we have an exodus from the cities due to COVID. And so it's putting a lot of pressure on our market. But I will say, as a parent of adult children who lived home for an extended period to pay off their student loans, um, I'm not the only multi-generational family. And it used to be that multi-generational was you took in an elderly mom or dad, but now it's the thirty-something young adult professional earning a good wage whose student debt happens to be, you know, eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And we have a lot of young professionals earning very good wages who are spending anywhere from two to three thousand dollars a month on student loans.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, you know, we can't do anything about a level of student debt burden, but what we can do is make sure that we're providing a good variety of rental units at affordable prices, smaller homes at affordable prices, and information about mortgage assistance, especially for first-time homebuyers. Tackle the side of the problem that we can do something about.
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. Does anyone else have any thoughts?
I had a question for um, for our audience here. Going back to the um, the, whether we want to have inclusion of affordable units in new developments be voluntary versus mandatory. And we had some unshores and we had some voluntary. I wanted to know what the concern was that people had about making it mandatory, just out of curiosity.
So I, I will share mine, and mine, Megan, is that when you are a community trying to make yourself attractive to developers, when you offer kind of a buffet of options, they can pick the options that they wanna work in. But when you have a group of regulations that are requirements, a lot of times they'll eliminate you from consideration before even having the conversation. So I think creating regulations that encourage, but don't restrict invite developers in. And once they get to know your community, a lot of the decisions are made on the personal level.
Right, that's fair. Yeah, so maybe it's more of a trade, like the density bonus, for example, will offer you something if you do it. And. Understood.
Any, any last comments, concerns? Things we missed?
All right. Okay, excellent. Well, thank you everyone so much for taking time out of your, your weekday evening to, to listen. And hopefully, everyone learned a little bit more, walks away with a little bit of new information about housing affordability and how it relates to Portland, to your community. Um, as we said at the end, there will be um some next steps. I think Megan just stuck the link to the River Cog website in there, which is going to have project updates. So if you wanna see uh where we are in the process, what's happening next with either the regional level housing plan or the Portland-specific municipal annex plan, um you can, um, yeah, someone commented they wish that more people had joined. Yes, we, we definitely do too. Um, but this uh recording will also be posted on um River Cog's website. Um, so even if somebody couldn't um. So even if somebody couldn't be here live this evening, they can still listen. So people can go and view the recording. So they'll still get to hear what the strategies were and still, you know, there, I think there's also an email address. If anyone does have questions, concerns or feedback, they can still let us know and still make sure their voice is heard in this process. So thank you everyone so much. Thank you to Mary for all of her assistance being our Portland liaison. And thank you to everyone and we'll hopefully catch everyone at a later point in this process. So thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.